Kaiser Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November fourteenth. Call to order, I think the only person, Mark Collier and Matt Lawler aren't here tonight. Who is our commission, Council?
She's covering for.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, for something I want to do real quickly is the election of the Chair and Vice Chair from this point through next year. So, I am going to open it, open up nominations for Vice Chair first. Are there nominations?
I would like to nominate Crystal Wilson for Vice Chair.
You have nomination for Crystal for Vice Chair? I'll second that. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Crystal, you're Vice Chair.
Thank you.
If she's willing to serve.
I would love to. Thank you.
Now, election of the Chair. I've been Chair for a couple of years now, and now I'm, my term has ended, so I'd love to be able to pass this right tonight to somebody. So, I'll open up the nominations for Chair for the Kaiser Planning Commission. Do I hear a nomination?
I nominate Gary.
I second that. Gary, would you serve before?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Gary and Crystal are new leaders. Passing it to Gary.
Here, quick.
Quick.
He changes his mind?
Yes.
Further review.
Let's have a Florida recount.
We really stand on protocol.
Yes. Thank you, both of you.
Okay, so, first of all, Hirsch, thank you. You've been a great contributor to this community in a number of ways, certainly on the Planning Commission, and we'll be sorry to see you go, and yet it'll be nice to see a fresh face and fresh voice and ideas, so that's good. The approval of the minutes for the October two thousand eighteen minutes?
I make a motion that the amendments of October two thousand eighteen be approved as written.
Second?
Do I hear a second?
My second.
All in favor? Oh, I wasn't here.
Aye.
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 We have three ayes, two who are not present at the last meeting, and Mark Collier is not here tonight either.
I just got a text from Mr. Collier. He's stuck in traffic on I-5, and he is not going to be able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Parents of interested citizens, this won't take long at all. So, we will move on to the continuation of the public hearing of the proposed text amendments, modifying standards for accessory dwelling units. And, do I need to officially open that? Okay. Continuation of public hearing is open. And, let's, we get, there's nobody here from the public, so, let's go to staff.
All right, thank you, newly appointed Chair, Wayland. So, we're carrying forward from last month, and I know Michael wasn't here, but everybody else was. Oh, Kyle, you weren't here either. All right, so it's like, brand new. Sweet. A whole, it could be a whole new conversation. So, we brought last month amendments to our section two point four zero three, which is our shared housing facilities. In addition, there was a minor change to the definitions section. Primarily, we brought those changes to line up with some of the vernacular that's used in the state legislation that was passed regarding accessory dwelling units, or, as we will refer to them now that I've said it out loud, ADUs, it's much faster. So, we kind of walked through those changes that we were proposing. There was some that were substantive, we wanted to kind of modify, not just the language, but as we started to look at our existing standards for accessory dwellings, we looked at some ways to remove some barriers, reducing some setback requirements, changing the parking requirement, reducing that. And so, at the end of the meeting, which it got carried forward, and there was kind of two and a half things, I guess, that we were kind of charged with. One of the things was some language regarding owner occupancy, there was concern expressed about how it was written, so Counselor Johnson graciously helped kind of craft some language on the fly and made that a little better, and so we plugged in some different language for owner occupancy. It's still there, it's just reworded. So, there was that piece, and then the other piece was there were some questions raised about driveways, and the language we had proposed essentially had said, no new driveway could be built, it had to be with the existing driveway for the main house or the main, the main structure. A lot of questions were asked as to why that standard was there, and so, I can't say, hey, I'm gonna have to talk to Public Works a little bit. So, I did have a sit down with the Public Works Director, he kind of explained to me what generally the standards are. The Public Works Director does have some flexibility in our design standards for driveways specifically, but when a driveway's built, when you have a curb, gutter, and sidewalk street, there are some ADA requirements, and generally speaking, it takes about six feet of run to get to curb height at the property line, which is what our standard is. So, driveways generally end up being, you know, the twenty-four feet is kind of a standard drop width, or driveway approach is the term that Public Works would use. The maximum allowed generally is a thirty-foot approach width, so, clearly, if you have a twenty-four-foot approach and you added, you couldn't add very much, you know, I mean, maybe six feet, and a lot of times that doesn't work because a lot of times the driveways are held right off at the minimum because you're setting houses off at five feet off the property line. So, I just, I discussed with the Public Works Director at some length, kind of what the, what the questions were and what the concerns were from Planning Commission, and so, we did modify that language in what's before you tonight, to basically, the intent is to give some flexibility. So, instead of saying, no new driveways allowed, it's essentially saying that unless approved by the Public Works Director. And what Bill had explained to me is that they take into a number of factors, you know, sometimes there's utility considerations, there's vision clearance considerations. One of the discussions we had was, well, what if it was a corner lot, and you had the main house and a driveway over here, and you put an ADU over here, and you wanted to build another driveway? So, the language we're proposing would give some flexibility and discretion to the Public Works Director, which we feel, it makes sense, it assures the safety factor, which is really the concern, and it still encourages and promotes not creating new driveways. And, Michael, I think you will appreciate this, because I kind of know where you stand on that. One of the things, and I don't know how much you've had a chance to look at the proposed language, but one of the things we did is previously, we always said, one additional parking space is required, and we've changed that standard to, we're recommending that that'll only be required if there is no available on-street parking. So, anyway, so, just as an aside, I know parking isn't near and dear to your heart sometimes, we've talked about that in the past. And then, and then the third kind of charge that we were given was to kind of explore, I think was the term that Debbie said was used, explore the concept of the detached ADU on a duplex on a corner lot, or even possibly the idea of having both an attached and a detached ADU. So, one of the concerns we had last month, but I was unprepared to talk about, was the kind of the, what would, how would I say it? I guess the ramifications, if you will, of what is multifamily development versus single-family duplex development. So, I had a conversation with the building official over at Marion County, who's our, who's our building official, and it was as kind of we suspected, we'd talked about, but weren't a hundred percent positive, I'm not the building official, but basically, from a building codes perspective, the single-family and duplex is one animal, and then you go, anything with three units within one building becomes multifamily or commercial. And so, that is the magic number, is that three units in one building. Essentially, the building official said that whether or not you're building a duplex, or you're gonna build an attached ADU, as we're proposing, so you convert part of a house, or have a, you know, side-by-side, or a upper, lower floor split for an ADU, they view that all the same, as, you know, the duplexes, they view it as a duplex. So, there wasn't really much of an implication there, the, but the other, the other piece was the detached, and there was, you know, specifically some conversation about allowing a detached ADU in conjunction with a duplex lot. And so, we kind of looked at the code, there are some kind of funky implications that arguably would come into effect in our general design guidelines, where we kind of have this big chart of when and what public facilities and utilities are required, things like fire hydrants, and streetlights, and street improvements, and those types of things. Generally, you have a category for single-family duplex, and then everything else, it goes multifamily, commercial, it goes industrial, all of that, and so, what becomes difficult is historically, when we've seen multiple dwellings on a single lot, they've triggered into being considered multifamily from a development code perspective, and so, you may have that duplex lot scenario where if it were to be allowed, it would actually trigger full-blown street frontage improvements, or a brand-new fire hydrant for a small seven-hundred-square-foot residential accessory structure. So, there was, there was some hurdles there, I don't think they would be insurmountable to ferret those out and figure those out, or to focus kind of a narrow scope. The bigger kind of issue, as we began to look at it and analyze it, and Nate and I actually got together and we met and talked about it, the bigger concern that we had was really more, more hinging around the neighborhood fabric factor. Over the years, we've got a lot of pushback from the not-in-my-backyard kind of folks when it comes to infill development. Clearly, we've, we've, we've relaxed our standards on ADUs significantly over the last couple of years. I think when we brought this to Planning Commission, maybe two summers ago, well, Sam was still here, so it was a while back, we had a major shift in the allowance, instead of just a twenty-five percent, but bumping that square footage up to seven fifty. And I think what's difficult is that with both the zoning code and the comprehensive plan, in the residential, single-family zones specifically, it's designated for that low-density residential use. And so, there's kind of a long-held expectation of what that neighborhood fabric's gonna feel like, and when we look at what those expectations are, and then we couple that with this existing chapter, the Development Code, section two point four oh three, it's allowed, two point four oh three is allowed as the special permitted use in the residential zone. And so, in the residential zone, it goes, okay, special permitted use two point four zero three, and there's three specific categories in it. It's that attached, the detached, or the duplex on the corner lot, and all of them have always maxed out and capped the number of dwelling units per lot at two. And so, we feel that our recommendation is to not move forward with allowing the detached on a duplex lot, not allowing both the interior and the detached, we think it should stay with allowing one ADU at this point in time. And, one of the external factors that really kind of tipped, at least my opinion on it, is the fact that we, you know, we just recently received a grant, which I think we told you guys about, we, you know, actually, we just had a conference call last week with our consultant team. We don't technically have a signed contract yet, so I'm glad they're starting to do work, but that grant is to update our buildable lands inventory and our, and to do a new housing needs analysis for the city's twenty-year planning horizon. Now, that money is, basically, it's coming through grant money and different sources, but the funding that was passed with the legislature to do this, because we're a rent-burdened community, we have been told, and the money is, has to be spent by June two thousand nineteen. So, we will have an updated housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory by June of two thousand nineteen, essentially, and we truly feel, as staff, we truly feel that it would make more sense to hold off on the consideration of making that large of a change that could have a, basically, a bigger impact on neighborhoods as a whole than what the kind of existing expectation is. Most of the time with a housing needs analysis, you know, anecdotally, we kind of know we're gonna be lacking, we were lacking back when we did the last housing needs analysis. So, obviously, we don't have those numbers, but we expect that there will be a need shown for additional housing for our expected population growth, and oftentimes, coming with that, there would be possible efficiency measures and/or other implementation strategies to accommodate housing and different housing, housing types, and so, we feel that it would make more sense and kind of be a better, it'd be more true to the existing structure of the Development Code to hold off on making that bigger policy decision until we really have the data to back up what we need, because it may be that, that we want to, we may want to consider something even bigger than that, so, just depending on what the need shows. So, with that, I would open it to any questions, if you guys have them, and, yeah, thank you.
So, I didn't interrupt. Just coupled with that, the, it's still pretty fresh in our memory about the discussion that we had with some of the neighborhoods, that I was professionally, but nonetheless, significantly reprimanded about small lot development in some of our neighborhoods, and not being very sensitive to neighborhood character when we dealt with particularly a partition. And, yeah, so, I know there is some sensitive issues, and I feel it keenly, and until we have all of the information that Shane is talking about, to be able to carefully consider exactly what we're talking about for our needs and for the impacts to all of our neighborhoods, and whether or not we want to be more articulate as to where we allow them versus where we would perhaps reserve, community character kinds of issues, this, just simply allowing it, is, is not very articulated. And, so, I feel pretty sensitive about that kind of, it was not a comfortable feeling to be there in open session. So, that's another reason why, I just wanted you to know, it's not just because we're sticking the muds, it's because we have, you did survive I-5, it's because we have some direct experience with the sensitivity in some of our neighborhoods.
Questions for staff? Comments?
On, on, on the grant itself...
You can sit there if you want.
Is there an emphasis in the grant for low-income housing?
No, it's all housing types, so the buildable lands inventory is across the board. It's all housing types, including multifamily. It is not a commercial-industrial supply, but it is all residential supply.
Michael first, and then Kyle?
When I was looking through this, could you explain? I was just confused with the wording under two point four oh three point oh one A, the new A, so it says, orientation and access, an attached ADU shall not have more than one front entrance facing a street, a shared entry or entries on opposite building frontages, frontages shall be required. What do you mean exactly by opposite building frontages?
I see what you're saying. It does not have to be directly opposite, just not in the same plane.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I could, Mr. Chair. Shane, just looking at that as we were starting the meeting, the intent there is that if you have a house with a interior ADU, that there's only one front door total. Okay, so, we'll, I'm gonna tweak that a little bit, so, in other words, if you have an internal ADU, you have one front door.
Facing a street frontage.
Facing a street frontage. What, and what it says is, is that, I lost it now, an attached, an attached ADU shall have not more than one front entry, meaning...
Facing a street.
But, the entire residence, it's not, one for the ADU and one for the other residence. Okay.
Should that be different?
Yeah, what we will, what we can do, and I don't know process-wise, but I, I mean, I think that I, I would recommend, Michael, it's a good catch, I think I would recommend that we change that word opposite, because of the confusion that draws. The, yeah, a different, just instead of saying opposite, we could say different there, because what we're, what we're, what we're saying is essentially, and this has been kind of a long-held requirement, when you're looking at an ADU from any street frontage, and most lots, you only have one street frontage, I mean, historically. So, if you're doing that, we want one front door that's a main entry door, but we've had ADUs come in where maybe they have a three-car garage, and they have a man door on the side, and they want to have a side entry to the ADU. We're not saying that you can't do that, that's absolutely allowable, we're fine with that, but what we don't want is we don't want two big front doors facing out on the street, because that has generally the building mass, and then it's looking more like a multifamily unit versus a single-family home, which would be more consistent with the requirement. And then, if you're doing an upstairs-downstairs split, or, you know, something where you go in and then it's parceled up from the inside of the house, you'd have one main entryway. So, that's, that's what it's intending to say.
So, if we substituted the word different instead of opposite, do you think that would address that concern?
Yes, but what you were just saying, Shane, so, so if you're not in a low-density residential zone, you still couldn't have the two front openings in on the street?
I would say that if you're doing it as a single-family home with an ADU, absolutely, that is correct. I think the difference would be is most of the time in an RM zone, you're gonna be allowed to just outright have a duplex, or a fourplex, or an eightplex, and it's just driven by density overall. So, the AD, and it's, and this is where it gets, it's a little bit of a nuanced discussion, but realistically, ADUs, I don't, obviously, I don't have a crystal ball, but generally speaking, when you're looking at multifamily development and the, the folks that own those, they tend to be more investment-based properties. So, they are moneymakers, and they're gonna make more money with a multifamily development, maxing out that density to get more rents than they would as an ADU, especially since we have a provision that it be owner-occupied. So, that's, I think that's where the difference is. Now, if you had a single-family home in a medium-density zone, and it was a small lot, and they didn't want to do it as a real-deal duplex, and they just wanted to do an ADU, then we would hold them to these standards, but most of the time in a medium-density, you're gonna be able to have that duplex anyway.
Okay.
So.
So, my question was, and I, I don't see it in here, and I'm probably just missing it, converting and accessory...
Towards the end.
Yeah, Kyle, if you look on, well, it's page three of section two point four oh three, and it's K.
Okay, building conversion.
Yeah, so, basically, and that was, that's a pretty significant change from before. Again, I apologize, guys, I, with you guys not being here last week, we didn't, I'm not hitting everything again. So, yeah, so what we did with that, Kyle, is we've had a lot of concerns over the past, you know, few years, of people having existing shops, and they're out, in their backyards or wherever, and they're already there, and they want to convert them and do an ADU, and they're either oversized, or they're built to a three-foot setback, or a two-foot setback, or whatever that setback was at the time, and right now, our standards wouldn't allow it. So, what we've, we've done here is we basically said, hey, if you're doing a conversion of an existing structure, we're gonna let you do that regardless of where it's placed, we're not gonna hold you to the new setback standards, the building's already there, it's already impacting the neighbors. We are gonna hold them to the seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot overall size, though, so, you know, some of the old neighborhoods, you know, there's some, there's some properties around town, you got fifteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred-square-foot giant, you know, three, four-bay shops, and we're not saying you can convert that whole thing to an ADU and turn it into another three-thousand-square-foot house without going through the partitioning process and all of that, but if you wanted to convert two of those bays and turn it into a seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot ADU, and a shop on the other part, we're okay with that. So.
Got it. Thank you.
So, if someone wanted to build an accessory dwelling unit and an ADU, in the same building, would that be okay? Or is that triggering something?
Could you repeat the question? If somebody wanted to build...
So, they don't have an accessory unit yet, accessory structure, rather.
Okay, accessory structure.
Yeah, and they wanted to do that and have an attached ADU, would that be...
So, the intent, and Shane can correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent is to be liberal, so that the accessory dwelling unit does not count against your accessory structure cap. So, if you wanted to have both, you would still have the capacity to do that.
Could you do it in one structure, though?
So, so we didn't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, because I wrote it, so, we did not put that in there, Michael, we actually had a discussion about that, and he, this is, this is where it gets a little bit difficult. The reasoning, I'll tell you just straight up, the reasoning that I said no to that, personally, is that when we're looking at a community like ours, where we're in the middle of doing, or we're starting to do a new BLI and an HNA, if we allow folks to build thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot accessory buildings that don't get separately mortgaged, separately bought, sold, and done, it's, it's not creating more usable land, it's because an accessory structure by nature is really accessory to the primary, single-family dwelling, so if you're gonna build a structure that large, we'd rather see that done on a partitioned lot and just build another house. Now, they could build an accessory structure and have an accessory structure that meets our standards, and have an ADU, but they'd be separate, two separate structures. If that was something that you guys said, hey, we want them to be able to go to the thirteen-fifty and have it be attached and connected, I think that we could probably do a little tweak before this thing went to council to make that clarified.
Isn't there a six-hundred-square-foot limit on an accessory structure?
Yes.
So, you're kind of stuck there.
Also, it's pretty much a moot question, then, these are for older ones.
Right. Well, that's, that's why the language is there, Michael's question was if somebody came in for a thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot building, or twelve-hundred-square-foot building, and said, hey, this is my accessory, this is my accessory dwelling unit, this is my accessory structure, and they're attached, do we allow that? And currently, the code doesn't allow that because of the six-hundred-square-foot limitation, Kyle, because of this seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot limitation. We specifically allowed, we specifically added the building conversion language to address that already existing large shop, so.
So, I gotta look at the right person now, I'm gonna shift. So, the intent is that we're, we want to be liberal in where we allow these, and where we allow conversions to take place, that sort of thing, but we still have the overall structure, the overall neighborhood context that we're trying to be sensitive to. If somebody wanted to build an ADU and a six-hundred-square-foot shop building, we'd say, yeah, that's fine, because they're two different standards, and they have two different caps and limitations. It's, it's just where it gets really squishy when somebody says, well, I'm just gonna build an ADU, and I'm gonna build a shop attached to that ADU, which then turns into, you know, six-hundred-or-whatever-sized garage for the ADU, that's when we're saying, wait, these are, that's, that's really two different, separate dwelling units, and it's, one is not accessory to the others. So, in order to try and keep that, the structure and the intent of what we're preserving in our community, that's why we're saying, you can do them separate, but you can't do them, you can't build new that's, that large, that exceeds those capacities.
The only problem I have with that, and I get what you're saying, is, I could see someone wanting to build one structure, because it's probably more efficient, and you can make it so it looks more cohesive, and maybe fit in better.
And, somebody could argue just the opposite, you know, that it's not, that it's not as compatible, or that we, it's a, it boils down to what, what kind of policy direction you want to create.
Yeah. My, my main concern about it would be an enforcement issue, whether intentional or not, maybe it's a new owner later, somebody taking under this hypothetical a twelve-hundred-foot new accessory building that's been carved off into seven-fifty with the rest, and basically converting all or a portion of that other part to living.
Yeah.
To get around that. And I mean, and maybe it's not the first guy who came in, right? Maybe he was doing it honestly, but then he sold the property. Now the new guy says, well, I can make another couple of bedrooms out of this. And so that would be my concern.
Any other questions, comments for staff?
I just wanted to point out, you mentioned the parking thing. The language says no adjacent on-street parking available. Oh, okay.
I would be happy to consider different language. We had some other language and I can't remember what it was before, and I changed it to adjacent with the idea being we, we need to be sure there's actually on-street parking close, not sort of close. If we're going to say you don't need to add any on-street. So I'd be glad to, to fine tune that if you guys have some ideas or.
Nearby.
Pardon?
Nearby.
Nearby, well, that's a policy question. And then it becomes a wordsmithing question too. Because to me, adjacent means literally against that property. So what, what we're, we were concerned about as staff is with a lot of the infill development, we have development on access easements that has no parking on it. And there's already probably a parking squeeze there as it is. And if you're going to allow another dwelling unit on there and not require off-street parking, you're going to exasperate the parking problem. So the question is how close does it need to be?
And, oh, I was just going to say, and Michael, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, Shannon wrote it because he did, he did tweak the, I had, I had a little bit more just Shane's brain language written originally in the, the draft you never saw. From a, from an implementation piece in the office, if your house is on a street that's a publicly designated local street and allows on-street parking, from a permit perspective, there's one of us at this table that's going to review that permit. And I am not going to tell you to show me exactly how much space you have on the curb line that you own. Because you don't own that curb line, it's right away. Because the street is for everybody. So I was viewing it more as a, if the street that your property is on allows the on-street parking, then we wouldn't require it. So that was in my mind. Now, that may be a wrong interpretation based on what the counselor had intended in the language. But that was what I intended that to mean, if that helps.
Yeah, I guess I, I would like to see more language that gets to that spirit rather than locking this into someday when Shane's retired and.
Is that something then that staff can wordsmith, tweak, massage a little bit?
We will, when we get to the point of making a motion, then if, we would take direction thereby. Just as long as we're clear as to what your intent would be. As it's written, basically, nobody that's on an access easement, unless they could provide another parking spot on their lot, could do an exit, an ADU. But if you want to broaden that and say nearby parking or whatever, just make sure when you get to the point of making a motion that you give us what your intent is.
Yeah, my two cents on, on the subject is, I don't like the word nearby because that could be misinterpreted that it could be blocks away.
Three streets away.
Three streets away, because I've seen that in my neighborhood. I like the idea of adjacent to the property.
Yeah, and that's what I changed to. I found the old draft here from Shane's draft. And what it says in the previous draft was, accessory dwelling unit shall share the same driveway as the primary residential unit plus shall provide one additional parking space if no on-street parking is available. And I was concerned about what available meant, and that's why I chose the term adjacent. But that is a policy question. But if you're going to get away from adjacent, then you have the issue that, that Hirsch brought up. Then, okay, what are we going to say instead? And, and I wouldn't be comfortable with nearby. Certain number of distance of feet. And, and Nate just asked me, which is why we missed part of the conversation, because the boys were talking out of turn over here. He, he said to me, he says, well, that means that you can't do it if you had an, if your property's on an access easement. I said, that's exactly what I thought we had discussed. Because if you're on an access easement, the concern would be, well, wait a minute, where's somebody going to park? And, and so.
Right, but it just.
Exactly what I had intended, what I thought was the intent. But again, it's a policy question.
And the access easement question, that, that was something that we did talk about. I think actually we might have talked about it last month, a little bit about that. And it's not that you couldn't do it, it's that you'd have to provide another onsite parking space. Access easements notoriously do have issues with parking and people illegally parking in them. We don't want to proliferate that issue. It's a problem for fire, life, safety kind of issues. So, so if you're on an access easement and you wanted to do an ADU, you would have to provide another onsite parking space to, to be utilized for that ADU was the intent.
But we're just having all kinds of open discussion here. In a location and use provisions on off-street parking, we do have in a residential zone, automobile parking areas may be located on another lot if the lot is within 200 feet of the lot containing the main building. So there is a dimensional standard already in the code. If you wanted to implement that and, and just simply quote cite that standard in the ADU provision, that's just something for you to consider.
My thought on that is that you'd need an easement to actually have a legal claim to that spot on somebody else's property. So that would be difficult to.
Well, except for on-street parking, you wouldn't need an easement. Although you do have other provisions, the vehicle would have to move every 72 hours, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, granted, yes, it gets, it gets kind of squirrely here pretty quick. But remember, our intent is to be fairly liberal in trying to allow ADUs to be developed within our, our community, within limitations.
My, my thought is the, the flag lot problem is a big one I know of, you know, in, in the area where people are constantly parking in somebody's driveway and they can't get out or they can't get, you know, in. So I know, I got a couple of employees that have that particular problem and they ask the people not to park there and they're constantly parking there. So if we can have language in there to help alleviate that, because it is an issue on probably 50% of the flag lots in town.
Okay, let me think on that.
I, I, I know quite a few, because I've looked at building on flag lots, so I hear that common problem.
Most of those are declared as fire lanes. And so we could easily say something that parking shall not be allowed in any designated fire access lane. That may. Yeah, I mean, that's just restating something that's already there, but.
It's a question of enforcement and availability of staff to do the enforcement.
And, and, yeah. And who enforces it? A fire lane is.
And I do think Kyle, I mean, one thing is, we actually did make some changes to our street standard sections, which govern the private access easements, maybe last summertime, maybe even before that. It was quite a while back. It was early on when I first started coming to these meetings with y'all. And we actually did make some changes because of that. A lot of those issues are ones that were approved in the early to mid 2000s under our infill development standards. And there were some problems with access easements and signage not being required. And there kind of being a disconnect between which authority, was it fire district, was it city, was it whoever? And I think we've cleaned that up and the more recent stuff we've done, it is enforceable. For the, we've, we actually modified our parking ordinance not too long ago, well, Shannon did. And so if it is a no parking zone, or it's, it's signed no parking as designated by the city, it is actually enforceable under our parking ordinance now. It used to not be, but that has been kind of a more recent change. So as the word gets out, hopefully we'll be able to address those concerns better.
I'd just like to make sure it's in the, you know, in the wording somehow so that it's not an issue of, you know, that it could get slipped by under an approval.
Good. You have it then where you have C that says no additional off-street parking is required except as set forth below. One, one off-street parking space is required. If there's no adjacent on-street parking available, such as access easements or really narrow that down as to the situation. Because in, in reality, most of our streets, public streets, they're not, these access easements have plenty of parking available.
Sure, well, so here's, this is where it becomes difficult a little bit, Michael. And I'm not, I don't want to be, I'm not being argumentative at all, but just from a reality of looking at the mapping. So when we look at our streets, so when you take Kaiser and you look at the TSP and you look at the breakdown of what a local street is versus the collector or the arterials, generally the collectors and arterials don't allow any parking on them. But we have a lot of big lots on Shimawa, on Dearborn, even on Lock Haven. And so we've actually had ADUs come in on some of those streets. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing that. I'd prefer to go back the way that you said it originally maybe, to make it a little simpler for application. My fear is, is that we're going to end up creating a standard. If we try to wordsmith it and say, okay, not, if you're on a collector street or an arterial street, and then what if the standard changes because the TSP gets updated in a few years? So, I mean, really, because the, the intent is, is that if you have a property and there is no on-street parking available on the property that you own, you're not on a public street, you're, or you're on Shimawa and you can't park because there's bike lanes that are striped and you can't park in a bike lane, that's illegal. So then you're going to have to demonstrate to us where one off-street parking space is. And I'm totally down with saying, hey, let's be flexible where they can provide it. Get the parking agreement. I mean, PUDs do it all the time. If you want to work with your neighbor and they have a bunch of extra area and you get an easement for a parking space, we could even consider that. I mean, I think there's some, some flexibility that we could give. I just am, I would say that unless Shannon can come up with something off the top of his head, my fear is, is that I'm not sure I can grab every instance where that's going to apply off the, off the cuff. Sorry, I should be better, but I'm not.
Well, how about instead of available, put allowed. So no adjacent on-street parking allowed. That way you're.
Okay with that.
Because that's capturing the bigger.
That gets up.
I guess I meant what the intent would be by changing that one word.
Well, because it, it takes away the situation that you have a public street that allows on-street parking, but it's not, might not be always adjacent to this property.
So, but you'd be leaving the word adjacent?
Leaving adjacent, but saying, instead of available, saying no adjacent on-street parking allowed. Because instances that we're talking about that don't allow the on-street parking.
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, no, I got it. So that would still mean that a situation with a access easement, they would, they'd have to put another parking spot on, yeah, okay.
Any other questions, comments for staff, Crystal?
I have two. First one may have been talked about last time, but I don't remember, is B dwelling units where it says just one ADU. And I thought we'd had discussion about having one attached and one detached available. Was that not the outcome?
Yeah, so that was, I mean, that was what we talked about at the end of the meeting, that we were directed as staff to explore that. And basically, we came back with the recommendation that we don't recommend that. Now, the one thing we did do is I did tweak the language where before it capped it, it, what did it say before? Oh, because it's a red line, it doesn't actually have it. Oh, no, it does, okay. In both the attached and detached, it, it said basically no more than two dwelling units on a lot can exist. So I changed that to basically frame it as one ADU. So either one attached or one detached. And the reason being is that if you ended up with a, a situation where you weren't in the RS zone, but you were in a multifamily zone and somebody wanted to do a detached ADU in conjunction with say your duplex that was sitting on your lot that's outright allowed in the zone, that language that limited it to only two dwelling units per lot would have been prohibitive. So I did tweak that, just so it's still, it, it didn't actually change the meaning of it. But, but we did, the recommendation we're bringing back to you guys is that we not allow both the attached and the detached in that RS zone, so.
Thank you. And then the second one, of course, is occupancy. I think I brought this up last time as well, where it is a property owner that has to reside on the area. I don't know if we could open that for discussion, but I do think that does limit the opportunities for homeowners and residency in Kaiser.
And both those issues are policy questions for the commission. Both the issue of one ADU, because that was staff's recommendation. You certainly don't have to go with that. And with regard to that first issue, and the same is true with the occupancy one. The notes I took from last, although we didn't have a formal vote, was, oh, now I, my notes are mixed up, so I'm not quite sure anymore. I, I, I believe Crystal, at that time, there was only five of you there. And you were the only one that was not satisfied with the ownership issue. And on the other issue, Mark was the only one that wasn't happy about the duplex allowing a duplex. But, you know, you guys can, it's a new month, you can change your mind or not, up to you.
The hearing is still open.
Yeah, hearing is still open and so is the discussion, so.
So it, basically from our perspective, from staff's perspective, we have the issues of how our zoning code differentiates between multifamily. The definition of multifamily is anything more than two units on a lot. And so that, that then becomes, the world becomes a little squishy and kind of falls outside the, the structure of what our whole zoning code is, is based around. So there would have to be a lot more structural changes in that. And that goes back to what Shane is saying. We're right in the middle of doing all of this, the revitalization, how we can look at introducing more mixed use and developing more land supply through efficiency measures, all of those kinds of things. Our BLI and HNA is in full swing. So rather than get in and rewrite our entire comp plan and zoning code to allow two additional ADUs on one lot, our recommendation is to you is to hit the pause button on that concept until we do some of this other work. Mostly because we still are trying, we're still dealing with neighborhood character. We're still dealing with things that are focused on all of our development standards. All of these things have been created to preserve neighborhood character. So when you introduce two additional rental units onto a single family, that then gets, it pushes us way out of our comfort zone as to the intent and the structure of our current code, so.
Thank you.
I just had one question, I was, and maybe I didn't see it in the rest of the document, but at the bottom of the very first page of the document that you sent, page two of the main document, discussion followed regarding on occupancy, et cetera, et cetera. And at the very end, it says, and short-term rental properties. Does that what was decided on short-term, if these ADUs can?
Yeah, so with, I think Crystal had posed the question about how that affected things like Airbnb and HomeAway and, you know, short-term rentals. And we kind of had a little bit of a discussion. Currently, the city does not regulate those specifically. We don't have an ordinance. I use the example, city of Salem, what they, you know, they adopted ADU standards, didn't have them before, but they adopted them in August. And they specifically prohibit an ADU being used as a short-term rental and they define it as 30 days. So they have a, but they have a different licensing structure. They do it through their housing code and the multifamily housing inspection program. They also are inspecting their Airbnbs and the, the short-term rental marketplace, right? So for, for the city, while we know that we can collect TOT tax on them, I don't know what that stands for, transit occupancy tax? Transient, oh yeah, not transit, not transit, transient occupancy tax. Anyway, we know that we can collect those, but we don't really have a structure in place currently and we don't regulate those as it stands right now. I think that obviously if policymakers were to create a program to regulate those and license those Um, I think that obviously, if policymakers were to create a program to regulate those and license those or something, that would be a discussion that would need to probably come to the forefront to have that. But as it is right now, um, we've had, uh, in the last few years, uh, we currently have one ADU under construction. I had one come in today that, uh, unfortunately, didn't quite meet our standards, so I need to chat with this guy here and, and, and talk with him a little bit, uh, as to how to direct the gentleman. And then we have one that was built just a couple of years ago, and I know for a fact, 'cause I know the family that did it, um, they built it, and their intent is to use it as an Airbnb, and they have some of the time. It's, it's mostly for out-of-town relatives to come visit, but they have used it occasionally for an Airbnb. So, um, anyway, all that to say, we did have a little discussion, but really, there was nothing in here that really affects the city's current position on that, which is, we don't really have a position on it.
And just a, a slight nuance, I, it, just to say, we haven't addressed it, it's a little bit... We actually took it to council, and council intentionally decided not to regulate it. So it wasn't, it wasn't through dereliction that we're not regulating it, it was by intent.
So where, and we are closing up this public hearing and moving...
Thanks, Jan. So, is this a good time to perhaps close the public hearing and see if we can get to a motion and discussion? No opposition, and the public hearing is closed. So, let's see if we can wrap this thing up. There's been a couple of things that were brought up last month and we're revisiting. One was the owner occupancy versus a family member occupancy. One was the duplex having an additional unit, and, uh, also basically having a detachment and, and, a detachment and undetached ADU. Uh, and staff recommendation is that we eliminate that possibility. So basically, you could have one ADU in the RS zone, um, except where duplex already exist. And I was actually a proponent of the allowing the duplex to have the same property rights as you would as a single-family residence. And I've done some research on my own in different communities. And that's pretty much consistent with what I'm finding, 'cause they want to maintain neighborhood characteristics, and even though there might only be a handful of them, 'cause I've driven around the city and there's, there's probably not a dozen duplex properties identified where they could realistically fit. Um, so it's, that's not a big deal in terms of making more housing available for people. So I'm willing to skip over that part, and, uh, I understand that by allowing just one ADU, whether it be internal or external, we're still potentially creating thousands of more duplexes in our community.
Sure.
You know, so, and that can compromise some neighborhood characteristics, so. So where do we wanna go on this, ladies and gentlemen? What direction would we like to give to staff?
Well, for one, I'm like what staff has already written, and I wanna, I'm still for the owner of the property live in one of the units. Based on, uh, uh, neighborhood character.
And motion?
No, I'm just, my, my point.
Okay, any other comments?
Do we need a motion to discuss this?
That's a good question, do we need a motion to discuss this?
We need a motion to discuss.
You can do it either way, you can make, you make a discussion and then make a motion on the entire ordinance, or you can discuss each separate point. I guess the question would be, um, before we forget it, if, if by consensus, the, uh, word "different" for "opposite" in the beginning about the building frontages, if there's no objection to that, and the word "available" replaced with "allowed" on the parking issue that Michael brought up, is there any objection to that? So it would appear to me, then you have just the two issues, uh, similar to last week, and you can definitely deal with those by separate motion, uh, in, conceptually, rather than language. And then, and then depending on that outcome, a, a motion for the actual draft. Two issues being, if there are two issues remaining, the occupancy issue and the, and the third duplex issue, the, the third unit issue, if, if you're owner, the ownership, I'm sorry, thank you. That's what I meant, uh, is the ownership issue, and then whether or not you can have more than one ADU.
Okay.
So you're saying we need to make a motion to...
On, on each of those, i- i- yeah, 'cause I think there is some, and we have a different makeup, and I'll point that out, uh, here than we did last month, and so I think it probably would be appropriate so that there's no confusion that you make a motion on, on each of those, and it does, it can just be conceptual, uh, with regard to the, the staff's, uh, draft. A staff's draft, just to reiterate, requires owner occupancy of one, either the ADU or the primary dwelling. And so the, the motion would be to whether to accept draft, staff's draft on that issue or not.
Before we jump into that, I wanna point out, I think we all received a, a letter that was, uh, from Matt, basically concurring with the recommendations of the, the staff report. I wanna make sure everybody reviews that and make sure that that's, uh, acknowledged as being...
That, that's part of the record, and it's for your consideration, certainly, it cannot count as a vote, so.
Okay, so do we have a motion coming here? Hirsch?
I assume that the staff report with the additions of the wording correction, uh, be submitted to council for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
So will we be able to discuss those two things?
Yeah, okay, let's have a discussion.
I, I just wanted a clarification on the home occupancy thing.
On our owner occupancy?
The owner occupancy, I'm sorry. You've mentioned that, um, we allow, we would allow an addi- one additional, or one ADU on an existing duplex, did I hear that?
No, we're not, no, we're not going to, there'll be one ADU on your traditional single-family home. That can be attached or detached.
But I thought you'd said that there's an existing duplex.
Last meeting, Gary was a proponent of the idea, and I think he's changed his mind. Uh, essentially, what the staff recommendation in the draft before you would only allow one ADU in accessory to a dwelling unit. So if it was a duplex, you couldn't have an ADU. If it was a house that already had a converted attached ADU, you couldn't have an additional detached ADU. So, uh, two ways of saying it, one is only two units, or as Shane put it more precisely, one ADU. And only an ADU allowed, um, for a single-family house, is that pretty much yet? So that's the staff recommendation, that's before you. And then, since it's one motion, which is fine, the other issue is, one of the units has to be occupied, uh, by the owner. So, either one, so that's the motion before you is, is, is written that way on those two issues.
Any other discussion on this? Crystal?
Sorry, I'm the only one, but I had, I had two circumstances that came up that were applying to this between last session. I just wanna offer them for consideration. One is, I have a friend whose husband unfortunately lost his job, and they were looking to relocate to another city, and they had already invested ten years of mortgage into their home, and they wanted to keep that home and rent it out while they temporarily relocated, hopefully to move back. In this situation, this would limit their opportunities for rental income. If they, they couldn't have an ADU, if they were already renting out their home, and they wanted to do an ADU, they would not be able to do that. The other, um, circumstance that came into my mind is someone that has multiple properties, they own multiple properties and they're renting out multiple properties, they would not have the opportunity to do ADUs on their multiple rental properties, because they can't live in all of those properties.
That's correct. And I think the, oh, go ahead, Kyle.
I, I have the same, you know, thoughts on that. It's limiting the availability of, you know, rental income on something, to me, is, is hard to do, because, you know, that's, that's the way a lot of people, you know, keep their money, not necessarily make it, but they keep it, is they buy property and then they, they rent it out. So it limits that particular property from that instance, and, and I happen to have one that's, that fits both of these problems. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly which way I, I feel most comfortable leaning, but I hate limiting. Right now, it doesn't affect me, but it could affect the person I sell my house to, so.
Well, speaking with my landlord's hat on and empathy for, you know, maintaining a revenue stream and possibly looking for ways to increase revenue stream, I'm kind of speaking against myself when I say that, since not all landlords maintain property at the rate as when they're actually occupying the space. And if we want to maintain the community feeling, which is, is erratic itself, I think we raise more opportunity to make it, to create some less desirable. And, you know, it's, 'cause it's that five percent of the people that are gonna make it ugly for the other ninety-five percent, so.
We already see that in other areas of town that have more rentals than, you know, than owner occupied. So i- it could happen, but it's tough to say, to say we're gonna limit that.
But this, again, is something that, should we take it with requiring owner occupancy in one of the two units, that, uh, this can be revisited. You know, this isn't, this is something we're looking at, trying to set a framework now, but hopefully won't come back to as often as we do the sign code, but this can be said again, so.
And that, that's one, one way, one thing I feel about this is, you know, my property right now could be a duplex with, uh, ADU already existing on it. So, um, it's, it's hard for me to say we can't do this, but I, I'm not using it that way now, but it could if I sold the property. So it does limit who's buying my property if this comes into, you know, effect. But I understand the, the feel of the neighborhood too, so.
Hirsch?
Well, I don't have property in, like your situation, however, I'm a long-time resident of Kaiser. Grandpa came to Kaiser in nineteen twenty-six, I came here in nineteen fifty-eight. So changes in the, the, the feeling in Kaiser, I was involved back when Kaiser became a city in nineteen eighty-two. So I know kind of some of the spirit and, and thoughts, and Nate kind of alluded to some that he experienced with, uh, some land use decisions. And that's why I'm saying, for now, I want it owner, I'd like to see it owner occupied just to prevent that one percenters, uh, from causing a problem, at least for now. That's, that's why I'm for it.
So we, we have a motion on the floor, and are any of the other people are thinking, like Kyle and Crystal specifically, wanting to make an, offer an amendment to that motion and see if they can get support for that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna go against it, it's, it makes sense to me, I just, it's hard for me to say.
I, I agree, I think I, I feel the, the sentiment of maintaining Kaiser, um, and I do not want to offer an amendment.
So does that wrap up that portion of the, and are we ready to take a vote? Okay. So the motion is on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition? Passes unanimously. So staff will take what we've done and rewrite this again, and we'll review it and hopefully pass it forward to council?
Boldly go.
Okay. Okay, so, um, staff report, new old business.
So we have notes this time, um, you heard us talk about the HNA BLI. And we did have a, a conference call with our future consultant, as soon as we have the contract, we, we keep hearing any day now. It's actually, there's new procure, procurement rules at the state, so it's gotta go through the Department of Justice and... Anyway, but, so we are prepared, um, we sent out the request for, uh, people to volunteer to be on that. And I know a couple of you actually volunteered for that, are think, because we had so much response, we had, uh, like thirty-two people, thirty-three people, uh, respond, saying that they would be willing. So we went through this process of elimination. Uh, we chose not to put any planning commissioners on the specific committee. We also chose not to put any of the, um, city councilors on the committee, because really, the committee is making a recommendation to the city council. We, we're governed generally by the same rules, that if you're already on two committees, um, you can't be on a third, so that knocked a couple, um, of our volunteers off. Anyway, so, uh, just today, we've, um, submitted a list in the packet for council consideration on Monday. Basically, council appoints the committee. But having said all of that, these are open meetings, and these will be indeed, we would hope, and it'd be nice, honestly, if we had a planning commissioner there observing the proceedings. So, um, I don't know if, uh, if you wanna take that on as a, a self-assignment, or if you want the chair to appoint you to do, I don't know how to do that. But it would be a good idea if we kept tabs as a planning commission to how to do that as a liaison, or however you would wanna do that.
Do we know when that's going to be yet?
Well, supposedly, our first meeting is before the end of the year, if it is before the end of the year. Since we can't even get started yet, if it is before the end of the year, I suspect it's gonna be like on December twenty-ninth, or something. I'm suspecting that will be amended. So I don't have dates yet, there will be four meetings with a possibility of a fifth if needed. Uh, yeah, it, the project has to be wrapped up by the end of June, by June thirtieth. The project has to be completed, because that was the strings from the state legislature on the, on the process. Uh, so it's very short-term, um, not too intense, but obviously, four meetings in six months, kind of thing.
Like, will they be daytime meetings, evening meetings?
I suspect, because I, I asked the consultants if we could have a larger committee. You know, they're typically dealing with seven people on a committee. I asked them if we could have eleven, just because of the number that volunteered, they've agreed to that. So I suspect they will be in the evening, um, because you start getting more people, people work, and daytime's become more, more of a problem.
What's the official name of this group?
Citizens Advisory Committee to the HNA BLI Project.
Or something like that.
Or something like that.
I had to rename it before the packet deadline slightly, but it was something like that.
You renamed it?
Nate's name was a little wordy, so. But he's got basically the right words, a slightly different order, so. It, it's already very law, I didn't wanna change it too much, 'cause it is the state, you know, so.
Is there anybody on the planning commission that would like to volunteer to attend one or more of these? So staff would know who to contact?
Maybe you could rotate the assignment, um...
I, I don't think I will, as a planning commissioner.
But you could have him as a citizen, right?
Uh, yes, uh, and, and there will be opportunity for citizen input. So it's not like it's a closed meeting, or not like there's no opportunity for input. It's, yeah, it's just... the, the official voting member on the recommendation to council is limited to 11 people.
Are you going to have occasional rollouts, like with the other advisory, you brought it out to council and the public in the process, or is it just do it and then put it out?
As material is prepared, I mean, sure, we'll, we'll share what we, what we get, but honestly, because it's such short-term, I expect there's going to be, we're working on, we're working on it, and here you go, I don't know, though, for sure, but if, if there is material prepared, we would be happy to share it.
So, given the flexibility of scheduling and time and all, could you just maybe send out a random, you know, when this is set?
Sure.
Just send emails out to the planning commission, and if somebody wants to raise their hand, or more is available, just to sit in the audience, we can do that, is that acceptable to you guys?
Great, we can do that.
Anything else, staff report?
Yes, so our cost of growth study, there was a final draft that was prepared, there was some final edits that are, that we just hammered out just today, so that will be available for you any day now, how's that?
He said he was hoping tomorrow, so we'll see.
Yeah, so, we'll share that with you as soon as we get the final report, like I said, we just hammered out a few wordsmithing kinds of things today, and, so, I can't. So, and the other project we have going is the revitalization project, I mentioned that earlier, where we're looking at efficiency measures and trying to incorporate better utilization of our limited resources of land, one of the, one of the tasks now that the team is working on is what specific code amendments might look like, and so we're waiting for that, but again, this, the revitalization project is a longer project than the cost of growth study, I think we are scheduled to be done by, by July.
I think you're right, but the thing keeps moving a little bit, because we've got some hiccups.
As, yeah, there's always hiccups, so, anyway, we're working through those, I don't have a deadline for you, though, on when we're going to get that yet, when, when we do have them, you're going to see those code, those proposed codes amendments in official capacity, so, so I think that's, I think that's all we wanted to share with you.
Okay, so we do not have a council liaison report tonight, Kyle, are you available to do the city council next Monday? Would anybody except Hirsch like to be that person?
Well, Michael, you didn't have to go last month, because there was nothing to report, you want to go this month?
Yeah, I think I can make it, yeah, I don't, I have a comp. Oh, well, wait a minute.
Yeah, it's Monday.
It's Monday, my wife's a teacher, and they have long days, and so I have to be
And I'm going to be out of town Sunday through Wednesday, so I'm not available. Vice chair?
So, while she's checking, I would also like to raise the issue, because of all of the work that we're doing on these three concurrent projects, we do not have anything teed up for our meeting in December, we have typically, in the past, we have taken a bye in December because of the holidays, and we would ask for your indulgence to have another bye this December.
Does anybody really want to be here in the middle of December?
Mr. Chair.
I know your hand won't go that high, Mark.
Chair, I recommend doing a bye, even though I'm not going to be.
We will take a holiday in December, and our next meeting will be the second Wednesday in January.
It'll be next year?
Thanks, Crystal, okay, anything else? Then let's, we are adjourned.